The meeting is live, Chair Holmes.
Okay. Welcome to the March Parks and Rec meeting. We will now call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we'll note that Commissioner Williams is notified ahead of time that he is not able to come tonight. So it'll just be the four of us. So with that, we will start the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. We'll do a roll call. Giovanni, if you could please do the roll call.
I would be happy to, Chair Holmes. We'll start off with Commissioner Health.
Here.
Commissioner Massey.
Here.
Commissioner Wolnick.
Here.
Chair Holmes.
Here.
Thank you.
And note, we have some members of the audience here tonight, which is great. We love having some audience members in attendance. So we'll start with a reminder about the Zoom protocols due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time. We continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained in the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. You can join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the Raise Your Hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please turn off your video and unmute yourself only when called upon. You can also phone in. Participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID 8432-7994806. That's 8432-7994806. Passcode 343525. Again, passcode 343525. For those of you on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and be called upon, and star six to unmute. Okay, first, we will do the consent calendar. Do we have, for the approval of the minutes, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Giovanni, can you do the vote?
Yes, I would be happy to, Chair Holmes. Commissioner Massey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Health.
Aye.
Chair Holmes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, at this moment, we'll have public comment. This is for the period of the meeting for the public wishing to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. State law prevents the commission from taking action on items not on the agenda, so we will not be able to respond to it. But if you have an item that you'd like to bring to our attention, now would be the time to do so. And we have one person who's raised their hand, Ryan Motheck. If you'd like to present, that'd be great.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Greetings, Commissioners and Director Kanzian. Hope everyone's doing well. I am calling to, or Zooming, to speak on behalf of skateboarding in San Mateo. As we all know, skateboarding is getting quite popular, soon to be in the Olympics, and is also an activity that is widely known to be started in California and has a massive presence in the Bay Area. The Bay Area is considered the heart of modern day skateboarding. And back in the 90s and early 2000s, we made this big push to get some parks built. We got two built. Those two parks are somewhat outdated and have also not been maintained very well. And I think it's time that we get some more parks built in San Mateo. I also run this store by the name of Atlas. It's in downtown San Mateo. Been running that for about 14 years, and before that, also worked at a store called Deluxe San Mateo. I can tell you that skateboarding is alive and well. Some political figures would agree, some would not, but I can tell you straight up, skateboarding is alive and well. And anything that we could do to get this as an agenda item would be awesome, and even better, getting some real attention by getting some spaces built for skateboarding would be awesome. So that's my two cents for this meeting today. I appreciate your time and look forward to seeing some good stuff happening for skateboarding in San Mateo.
Thank you for your comments, Ryan. We always appreciate comments from the public. We have a few more comments. The next we'll do Michael Mandis.
Hi there, do you hear me?
Yes.
Hey there. I was, I called in last meeting as well, also about skateboarding. Because I am a subcontractor for the City of San Mateo Park and Rec Department, I run the skateboard instruction program at Beresford Skate Park. So this is also an issue that I'm passionate about as a 42-year-old man that's been skateboarding since about age 10, and sharing my love of it by getting the next generation skateboarding and helping them get good and learn how to progress safely. And also, we're a bit of a role model too, so to make sure they're not growing up to be punks. But I wanted to talk to you about skateboarding and facilities in San Mateo. I'm seeing a lot of other cities build modern parks that are something to be proud of, and it's a nice thing for the citizens. It brings skateboarders from other towns to go skate that park, and then they end up shopping at that skate shop there. They end up spending money at those restaurants. And as proud San Mateo people, we would love to have good, modern skate parks we can be proud of here. So just want to put another bug in your ear and let you know we care a lot about it.
Thank you, Michael.
Your thing.
Next, we have a caller whose number ends in 736. A reminder for callers, it's star six to unmute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony, and I have an extensive work with the community. Blood's Habitat for Humanity, I build skate parks, city cleanups, food banks, and all that. And I believe that actually I looked on Yelp to just take a look to see what we have in San Mateo to skate, and it was actually very embarrassing to see that. The parks were built, it was already outdated at the moment they were built. It's not adequate to skate. It, to me, only shows that disconnect between the community and the city. And if I can use a metaphor to explain that, I think I'll be using maybe a golf course. We can, we can bring a very talented landscaper personnel to build a golf course, but if it doesn't know the measurements between holes to holes, that golf course will not be adequate for playing. So I believe that we must have a skateboard community involved with the city to build something that is adequate for us to skate, and to create events, activities, safe place, and so we can have a say. Instead of having what we have in so-called skate parks. And like I've heard Ryan speaking about Olympics and all that, we, we need to have that push and build some athletes here, someone who can represent this place as well. So that's my goal for this. It's, I believe we must, I'm sorry, my work, push forward to this so we can have San Mateo first skate park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next caller or participant will be from Andrew Dolberg.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am calling on behalf of skateboarding as well. I'd like to second what everyone else is saying. I think it would be great for the community to get a new park built here in the city of San Mateo. I work here in skateboarding, and I see the number of kids coming to get their first skateboards. And if they don't have somewhere safe to do this and practice, then it's not going to go so well. So, yeah, I just, I would love to push and advocate for this to be built. And like Tony said, having the community behind the planning is super important and having, making sure that it's adequate for us to use. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Patrick Bedewin.
Yeah, it's Bedewin.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, my name's Patrick. I actually work with Andy and help run Atlas with Ryan and Mike. I approach this from a more, like, personal position. I grew up skating the Shoreview Skate Park. It was built when I was about 13 years old or so in middle school, and it's the reason why I know the vast, like, awesome crew that I work with at Atlas. And it's given me, like, a lot of opportunities in life that have taken me around the world, taken me into the photography career that I have now. And it really all came down to, like, my involvement at the skate park and meeting such great people, in addition to, actually, like, the physical exercise and expression that it, that it allowed. Shoreview is old, it's, you know, I think over 15 years old. I love the place, but San Mateo just needs a more modern availability for skate facilities. So I'd just like to reiterate what other people are saying, and, you know, we're seeing a lot of stuff pop up all across the Bay Area, and I would love to see that happen in the town that I was born and raised in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we'll have Daniel Palarka.
Hi, guys, what's up? I'm Daniel, I'm a San Mateo local, and I just, yeah, to just build off of what everyone else is saying, I just think it's really important to get a new park built because, like, to build off of what everyone was saying, it'll just keep everyone out of trouble, it'll just really bring the community together on top of building a community. And I just think it'd be really important to do that because, like, outdoor activities have been skyrocketing lately, skateboarding, scootering, and biking. And I think kids and adults of all ages just need a good place to get their wiggles out and just spend part of their day not in the house or cooped up somewhere. And as, like, this pandemic is kind of not, like, coming to a close, but like, as, just like, cultural reset almost is just, like, happening, I just feel like a park wouldn't hurt. But my local skate park is Beresford, and the play structure there, and like, kind of the whole park was remodeled except for the skate park, like, even the tennis courts were remodeled. But, yeah, the skate park there has been there forever. It's kind of an eyesore, and I just think that it could use a little love. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys still hear me?
Oh, yes. Okay, so we have no one else raising their hand? Oh, there we go, BT Visuals.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm a new resident to San Mateo and a friend of some of the other people that have spoken ahead of me. I think everyone made a really good point in the sense of community and mental health. And I guess a personal statement for me is, I grew up in Southern California, and as a kid, the skate park was pretty much like where I spent the majority of my, my time. So I think for the future generation, I think having a space like that, that is well-equipped and safe and, you know, enjoyable for everyone is very important because that's something, skateboarding is something that has never left me since I was 14 years old. So I think that's important for others to enjoy as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have one more raised hand, a couple more. Phone number ending in 736. And a reminder, if you're on the phone, it's star six to unmute.
Hi, it's, thank you again for the opportunity. Hi there, does everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity again to speak. I just want to make it clear that what we're trying to do here is to create a connection between our community and the city as well. So we actually have a path that we can walk through. And then, like I said, like I mentioned it, having, like, a skate park, which I heard they say bears for, it's, which I, I think it's a so-called skate park, it only reflects that, that type of disconnection. So if we can work together, I think would be an amazing opportunity for us and for the city to walk among us, with us, as, as one, as a community. And by saying that, I've had work with the city of San Francisco building a skate park, and I was very pleased to be capable of work with them and having that help, which I, I believe that. I live in San Mateo, so I do believe that we can do the same, if not better, in, in the city. And so I'm very grateful to be capable to speak with you guys and see their things moving forward towards that goal. And thank you again. And good night. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. And then next we have Joshua Spira.
Hey, everyone, just making sure you can hear me before I start.
Yes.
All right, well, first of all, thanks to all of the Commissioners for volunteering and being part of making government work for everyone. It's really great that you do that. And I'm also calling in to speak in support of adding more skate parks to San Mateo. While there are currently two facilities, they are, and, and we, as skateboarding community, really appreciate them. And by the way, I'm almost 40, and I've been skating around San Mateo since, since my late teens. We really think that there is a need for another skate park that's more modern. Infrastructure needs to be modernized, and building skate parks serves so many purposes. It brings money to the community. It gives kids something productive to do. I'm also a teacher, and I think especially now during times like COVID, having outdoor activities that you can do distance are so important, and they will continue to be in the future. And it really helps to create a healthier, happier community. So strongly urge you to consider new projects and to really invest money in the community and in the children in the community by building more, more skate parks. And, you know, just really raising the quality of everyone's life by doing so. So thanks for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other requests to speak. So with that, we will close the public comment. I'd like to thank the member, the members of the public that have come to express their opinions. You definitely reflect a vibrant community in, in the city, which is wonderful to hear you guys come and, and speak to us. So thank you very much. With that, we will move on to new business, which is the proposed park and recreation fee schedule for 2020, 2021. And Nicholas, I think we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Director. My name is Nicholas, and I will commence with sharing the presentation for this evening's update, or proposed update of the parks and recreation fees. So I will share my screen. And I'm hoping you can all see this. Wonderful. Okay, so as mentioned earlier, this is the fee update that we do every year. This year, I, as noted in the administrative report, we are only making minor market adjustments and streamlining fees. The fees are annually, can be annually increased by the cost of living or CPI, CPI and/or CPI. However, as this year it's at a historic low, we chose instead to make market adjustments or streamline, streamline fees, so that way we make things easier for the years ahead. In addition to the market adjustments and the streamlined fees, Poplar Creek Golf Course will also be piloting a membership program that we will be talking about this later in the slide pack. And as well as that, the park and loo fees, although are currently under review as part of a citywide initiative, the current changes that have been tabled here have been made in the traditional, the historical way that we've always done it. So, in saying so, the first item that I will speak to is the picnic facilities. If you were to look at our fee schedule, which we sent out to you for your review prior to this meeting, you will see that we had a number of, a very small number of facilities that were at a markedly lower rate than their peers. And as such, what we've decided to do is to increase them so they are very similar to like-for-like areas that we have for rental. So tabled these below here. There's five in question, and in doing so, it will allow us to have uniform pricing. And as well as that, by making the pricing slightly higher than it has been, we are hoping people only reserve what they need as opposed to the cheaper properties without actually needing them on the day that they, that they act, that they book them for. As you know, our picnic facilities are very, very popular, and we've been receiving calls already for the year, I think, you know, day in, day out of the office. So by doing this, we are hoping that we encourage people to use them appropriately and also not book them when they don't really need them. As a singular item that I've included in this list, because there was no other real place for it, there's also the player registrations, which is right down the bottom. And what this is, is that we have a registration for players that we used to charge annually. However, now we've seen that there are a lot of sports that have a summer and winter season. Therefore, instead of having a annual player registration, we have a first season registration. Mostly, these registrations for players are $8 or so, so doing it twice a year isn't going to be in any way, we don't feel, you know, prohibitive to anyone in, in joining. But in doing so, we are making sure that we are collecting the right amount. And again, we are encouraging people to bear, to, I guess, have a higher appreciation for the year that they are receiving for our parks. Okay, from Parks and Abba, what we've had, what we've done this year is we have codified several historic fees, and that means that we have had a number of fees that we've collected for. However, as we've done so sporadically over the years, we've never actually tabled them by all that they've been there. This is our chance to put them into, to codify them into the fee schedule. And the, in doing so, we are applying fees that are basically passed through charges. So these, the fees that we have tabled here are basically the cost for the city to actually provide the, the service or the tree, or the, or the, the cost that we are bearing in order to install a tree or a bench or anything of the sort that, you know, in the sizes that we have here. So there's no actual profit margin, let's say. It is a straight-through cost recovery process. You will also see that, as well as the trees, we've also tabled the community gardens, and it's the 28 cents a square foot. The community gardens are allotted as lots, and we charge by the square foot based on the lot that you take up. And the 28 cents that we charge is for things like, basically, the water costs. We are providing every year to the, to, the two lots at Beresford and Los Prados. And again, there's no profit margin here, it's just a straight-out cost recovery. Moving on, we also had a number of staff charges in our fee schedule, and we have always named the actual cost per hour that these staff members are being paid, and we are charging people that use our facilities to have the services on the day of the rental. Again, as an effort to streamline, what we have done is, instead of having an actual number or a value there for the services per hour, what we've changed this to is to a staff rate. And the reason for doing so is that every year, as the staff rate changes, we don't have to come back and table this as, for, for an update. So again, we believe this is a better way of charging these, these fees. Of course, if anybody was to book a, a facility and ask what that price is, we would be able to, to give that to them. Moving on to the Poplar Creek Golf Course, as we all know, Poplar Creek has seen a never-before-seen year in terms of growth, utility. People are there, thanks to COVID, unfortunately, more often cannot. And what we will do, what Kevin Kabayashi and has, has wanting, has floated, is that there will be a program that will be $29.99 a month, and it will basically look at offering preferential tee times very early in the day, I believe, and some cost discounts through this bishop. We believe this will be a way to entice the regular players to choose Poplar Creek as their, as their preferred choice because of the fact that they will get access to, they will have access to tee times ahead of, ahead of others. The plan is to pilot this for six to eight months, and if indeed it proves popular and everybody's happy, it will be made into a permanent membership offering. Okay, last but not least, every year, we update the park and loo impact fees. Now, these are the fees that we charge for the, I guess, to, not I guess, for, for the construction of properties, homes, residential buildings at large. And they are considered a single-family, multifamily, multifamily of five-plus units and mobile homes. And there is a complex, somewhat complex calculation that we've, again, sent to you as part of the package prior to this meeting. But the, the, the input numbers that we use are the cost per acre. And then we use also the population factor for these, for these properties, property types, whether they are single-family homes, or they are a multifamily two-to-four, or a residential complex of five-plus units, or a mobile home. And in effect, what eventuates is the park and loo impact And in effect, what eventuates is the Park in Lou impact fee, which is the money that we use to rehabilitate, update, or keep our parks and recreational spaces in good shape for the residential growth that occurs in our city. Again, this year it has increased because of the fact that, as we all are aware, the cost per acre, the land value in San Mateo has increased and this, therefore, this has also been impacted. In doing so, we've tabled these and we've also put down the previous last years and this years, just so we can highlight what the differences are. And we are hope that if there's any questions, we can take them upon completion of this presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Nicholas. For questions, we'll start with Commissioner Halt.
I think these, it's all looked pretty straightforward. I was just curious, were there any, the increases seem pretty small to me and I understand the rationale why. Were there any areas where you, you wish we were spending more or where you see a bigger need at this point in time?
So when you say we are spending more, in what context, Commissioner?
Just looking at the line items and like the areas that we are increasing, it seemed very straightforward to me, but I would just be curious, were there areas, and I know we've kind of been following suit with years past and the approach here, but were there any spots where you see, maybe we didn't ask for more or you, or you see a growing need? I was just, I was curious, were we spending enough in some of these areas?
I mean, I can probably respond, you know, kind of given the circumstances of where we are, we didn't want to make a lot of changes right now. We're just trying to build back program and it's going to take us a while to really do that. So other than, I think, just trying to streamline some things and as Nicholas said, we've had a number of fees that frankly, we've been charging that we haven't put in the fee manual and it seems unusual, but every year we go through it and we always seem to find fees that we don't have in the fee manual. So but I don't think that we were very interested in trying to to use this current, this upcoming year as an opportunity to try and, and raise more revenue.
Thank you. No, that's helpful. Thanks, Sheila. No more for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wallner.
I have a question about the facility rental fee that increases. You mentioned one of the rationales was to encourage people not to reserve what they're not using. Is that a problem that you're actually seeing or is it a speculative problem?
I, I think it might be more of a speculative problem. Again, we haven't been renting picnic areas for the last year. So it's kind of hard to tell what the marketplace is going to be like. As Nicholas says, we are getting a lot of calls right now about future picnic reservations and until we get some better health department guidance from the state about what can constitute a gathering, we're just unfortunately having to say no at this point.
And those fees, I think I remember reading that they're still at least in line or under other cities, other similar or close cities for park rental fees or did I misread that?
No, you're, you're absolutely correct. And I think the other, they are about in line and in some cases maybe a little bit under. I think the key to remembering though is that we only rent our picnic facilities to San Mateo residents because they have been so popular in the past. So I don't know if San Mateo residents can go to Belmont or to San Carlos or to Burlingame to rent their picnic areas. But we just found because of the demand that we just can't take any more than what are the residents at this point.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Massey.
Thanks. I wanted to, first of all, express my appreciation for what you've done with this for this year and in the current circumstances and all. And I'm very supportive of the strategy that, that you're adopting, which is basically to do sort of strictly cost of living based changes and, and putting off doing anything more dramatic until things hopefully return to a more normal state. I did have a question though about the, the Park in Lou fee. And I noticed just as you were going through your presentation that the in Lou fees increased modestly for all of the categories except multifamily two to four units. And that went up some 57%. And I'm just wondering how that came, how that comes to pass.
I can, I can answer that Commissioner. I, I noticed that as well. It's obviously a huge increase. And, and the way it, it has, we arrived at that is because of the fact that it had a huge increase in the population factor that for, for that actual, for that actual building for the multifamily two to four unit range. And that's what basically drives it. And in the fee schedule, we've actually tabled the formulas, how it's calculated and as well as that as an example of how it's, how we are, we arrived to that, or your own perusal obviously. But if you want to, I can, that's so. But just to backtrack also, I should note that the, the two factors that we use, the first one being the, the, the cost per acre, we get that from one of the real estate websites such as Zillow, Trulia, Redfin, we use that because of the fact that they track the market. So they, we get the value per acre. And the population factor for the multifamily or single family or the classification that we have comes from the census. So fortunately, we don't, we don't, we don't have any power over how the numbers are calculated, particularly those are the inputs. And unfortunately, this is, or fortunately, this is what they yield in the way that we've been using them for the many, many years. Sheila might want to add something in regards to the review that is happening at the moment as an impact fee. And that's citywide because there are nine impact fees that are being under consideration. However, for our, for our specific part, it is, this is the way we have always, we have always done calculation. And that's why I've also included the, the two years in comparison, just so that way you can see that last year multifamily was two to, two to four was 1.78 population factor and this is 2.8. So that's a 50% or so increase in that, in that area.
Interesting, interesting.
So I, I think Nicholas addressed the, the primary issues. And as we referenced in Form C where there were explanation of this change, the base that we use is the American Community Survey, the ACS. And so whatever numbers they use to develop how many people per dwelling unit is what we use. So we always go back to and reference the same, the same point of information every year. So if they say that certain dwelling types go up, we use that number. And if they tell us that certain dwelling unit numbers go down, we use that number. So it really is, once you sort of plug the numbers in, it's really nothing but a more mathematical formula at that point. I do, I am aware that the commission has had concerns and questions and interests over our Park in Lou fees over the last few years. And I've indicated, gosh, the last couple of years, that it is part of the citywide impact fee study that the city council had requested. We are anticipating that the draft report to the council will get to them sometime in the spring. So they will be getting some review and recommendation by Matrix, which is the company that our community development department hired to do the, to do the review. So I don't know when, but I know that we've had a number of meetings here recently with the community development staff. And so I think we're anticipating potentially April or May, and it would be a study session before the city council.
Okay, you, you anticipated my, my, my remaining question, which was where, where is the, where's, what's the status of, of the study? Is there some way that you could keep us advised of the progress of this? And, and I don't know how we organize it, but some way to sort of find out what their conclusions are about, about all this. Since, since we're part of the, we may only be one of nine, but we're, we're part of the, the mix. So we'd be, I think I could speak for my fellow commissioners would be interested to see where the recommendations come out.
I will be happy to keep the commission informed of when it gets to the study session at the city council. I know that we've seen a couple of options that they've developed for Park in Lou that have taken very, very differing approaches. And right now we're referring that to the city attorney's office to make sure that they can review it and feel comfortable with it. So there has been no final recommendation yet made on what the proposal may be for Park in Lou.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any more questions, Commissioner Massey?
No, no, I'm done.
Okay. Staying on that same topic, you, Commissioner Massey hit on the same head scratcher that I had, which, and, and I didn't catch your number when you said Nicholas of what the population factor for the multifamily went from to 2.8?
Oh yes, it went from 1.78 to 2.80.
Wow. And that was Sheila, that's what you were saying is the association such and such that you guys reference, right? So that's not a, that's not a city number, that's like a statewide or nationwide number?
Correct.
Okay. But the, the land value number is a localized number off of, you indicate Zillow and a couple of other sources and that's something that city council adopts every year as a, as a resolution?
We include it as part of the fee calculation, but it, but that land value is not listed anywhere in the fee schedule. So it's included in the calculation, but you won't find that number called out in the fee schedule.
Okay. Yeah, I was really surprised at that, at how much it jumped from that one to the other. Have we, have we had jumps that significant in the past?
You know, Commissioner Home, without going back and kind of looking at it historically, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information right off the top of my head.
Understandable. Okay. All right, changing, oh, I did have another question on that. How does, I was watching the planning commission meeting last, last month about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. How does, how does this fee apply to the ADU if a, if a homeowner puts an ADU in their yard?
It doesn't.
Okay. Even, because I, I thought when I was reading it, that it, it applied at some, that there's different sizes and that it applied sort of prorated or something based on a certain amount of square footage, but I didn't see any, like the way I read the ADU, that there was something like 700 or 750 square feet or less, there was no fees, but over that the fees were prorated for the square footage. But is this, does this not apply at all for an ADU of any size?
You know, I, I could be wrong and so I may be speaking out of turn. But my understanding was that they were not being applied in order to try and keep the development cost of an ADU reasonable. So it may have changed and, and again, I'd be happy to go back and, and look at the discussion that the planning commission had and recheck with, with planning. But at least the last time of my point of reference, I did not believe they applied to either the JADUs or the ADUs.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't talk about these fees in particular as part of it. I just read the, the ordinance. Does this, does this, any of this apply to people that remodel and add on a second story or anything like that? So it's only new construction or new developments?
Commissioner Halliwell.
It's new construction that either subdivides land or where a map is, is needed or where there are assemblage, you know, assemblies of, of land to be able to put a large complex. But for a single-family remodel or if it's replacing single-family home like-for-like, no, this doesn't apply.
Commissioner Halliwell, if I may say, in the three years that I've been tracking these fees, we've never received impact fees for ADUs or for, for remodels. So I'm, I'm, again, like Sheila, I'm 99.99% confident that we don't. And my account thinking is the fact that I've never seen a fee like that. So I'm, I would have to say that there's a very high confidence level that we don't charge for ADUs or remodels.
Okay. And this fee, this is a, this is a per unit fee, right? So the, the, the 27,000 for the two to four, if you built two, if someone built two units, that'd be 27,000 times two.
54,000, yeah.
Okay. But if you had a single-family home and they tore it down and built a, built a duplex, it would just be times one, right? It'd be a net, net change.
It's the net change, yeah, it's a net change. And what happens is when you, the calculation, you, you calculate and then you subtract what we're there before. The calculation.
For like a duplex, they get credit for the fact that there was already an amount of people there before. So it's only for the increase in the second unit.
And for the sake of the calculation commissioner, I've assumed that all the, all the, the, the constructions in the, in the example are on, are on vacant land. So that it doesn't confuse the, you know, it doesn't complicate the calculation example.
Okay. All right, thanks. That, that covers those questions. For your other item, where you, you're normalizing or equalizing the rates for different rentals of different facilities, why historically did we have, and I'm sure we've talked about this in years past, I don't remember, but why was Indian Park cheaper than Beresford, for example, or what have you? Was it, was it less desirable, so it was cheaper? Was it quality of amenities that were there that made it cheaper? What was the, the past practice for the price differential?
It was likely all of the above that you mentioned. So again, I'd have to go back and look at it and see, and track it and kind of see where it's been. But it may have been for, you know, not having an upgraded playground or just the quality of the area. So I'd have to go back and look specifically over the past years.
Okay. And are we seeing, I mean, I know this year is, and we haven't had any bookings, but maybe, maybe historically, you may know Nicholas, but were these sort of cheaper facilities requested a higher rate? And can we track that to their price or were, was it still that like Beresford or the Central Park are like the, the most popular ones? And others were sort of different ratios of requests or, or bookings?
I, I can, I can say that the, the facilities with the Beresford is obviously very, very popular because of the facilities that it has to, to offer in its surrounds. Therefore, we do have, there have, there are facilities that are, that are, you know, I wouldn't say high quality, high demand. But they, you know, as far as the, you know, they are, again, you don't rent the playgrounds. So the facility space that you're getting, that's what we're trying to keep it, to keep the focus.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think that covers, covers all my questions. So with that, we will open up questions from the public. We only have one member of the public here at the moment. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand at this time. And again, that's on the participation panel, I think, was, I had directions on how you raise your hand. on the participation panel, I think, I had directions on how you raise your hand. It's on the top or bottom of the published agenda, you hit the raise your hand button to be called on at an appropriate time. You'd think I'd be doing Zoom long enough at this point that I'd know how to even raise your hand, but I don't. Okay, so I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. So with that, we will move to Commissioner comments. Twister Health.
There we go, none from me at this time.
Great, thank you. Twister Walnut.
Um, just thank you very much for, for your work on this and no other comments for me.
Thank you, Twister Massey.
Just as, as I said earlier, I also want to express my appreciation for the efforts that have gone into this and express also my support for where you come out. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, I have two comments. The one is the, I, I really liked the notion that we had different pricing for the different facilities, because in the past, we've talked about trying to maintain a variation for different socioeconomic groups, the ability to still be able to rent and book something. And, you know, the, those ones were, I don't know, 20% cheaper that if you're willing to go to a different location, you can have a, have a little better, or have, have, still have the ability to rent something without sort of getting the, the creme de la creme. And so I, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of raising the rates or normalizing the rates across the board. I think we need to have different priced rental stock to provide opportunities for the spectrum, the economic spectrum that we have in the community. And then my second issue, and everything else as far as your renaming of fees and tying them to positions rather than to a rate or, or even the, actually, I should comment that it's really exciting to see that golf has, has made a bit of a comeback. But I do remember a couple of years back, we had questions about if golf was going to get closed down or not. So, and I, I never even know which way to hold the club, but, uh, you know, which, which end is up for that matter. But, but it's really exciting that it's, that that is, has seen a resurgence, because that was something that really draw, drew, drew a lot of the public out when, when that was an issue. So I'm excited to see that. And then, so then my last concern is the, the Park in Lou fee. I know that's always been a sticking point for me every year, but I'm usually in favor of the fees. I just want them rebalanced. But this, this time it seems like it's like totally out of whack. And I recognize it's tied to a, a national number, but for a fee to go up 60% when all the others don't go up nearly that much, I think that's, that's a really big jump really quickly, especially at a time when we're trying to encourage housing stock and especially in a two to four unit realm. And so I would prefer that we held on that until the city could, could, uh, could restructure or work through their, their fees. Because, you know, if someone is building a, a four unit development, you've just raised the rates pretty substantially as far as added costs to implement. And so that, those are my, my two concerns or comments.
Commissioner, if I may say, the, 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 the fact that could come down next year. So, or, or, you know, so therefore, although I, I hear your, I hear your comments, especially as I've read that many cities are now moving to have fourplexes and abolish the single family zoning that, that I've seen happening in Berkeley. And maybe that's something that will happen in, in San Mateo. And especially because of the fact that you abolish it and Russia promoting the fourplex, which is square in the middle of what this is affecting. However, if I can just, the only thing I'd like to add is that this year, the, the fact that basically swung wildly one way. Maybe next year, you know, it will swing the other way. And we are noting these increases basically six months in advance of implementing them. And usually what happens is what we see is that there are a lot of developers out there who will make a payment in advance of the fees being implemented, because they're aware of the fact that it's going to impact in a negative way. So we do see people coming in just for the fees that due for an increase and all kind of hanging in there if they, that, you know, if I wait a week, I'm going to get a better rate because of the, the swing is going to be in my favor. So we see both of those. But I, I, again, because of the single family zoning abolition that is happening in many cities, I hear, I, 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 I understand your, your perspective here. And just to say that, you know, if the, if the revisiting, the impact fees that is happening at the moment doesn't, let's say, correct this or mitigate it in somewhat, I'm hoping that once the ACS publishes next year's population factor, hopefully it'll swing back to where it was and therefore normalize them somewhat.
I, I recognize that, but I still, like, a 60% jump's a really big jump. So I just, and I recognize it's all tied to just numbers that are out there. It's not like it's an arbitrary decision that was made. But at a time when we're trying to promote housing and housing is a, a crisis, it's just, it's just more than I'm, than I want to see it increase. So that's all for my comments. I guess we are looking for a recommendation to the city council to adopt this fee schedule. Is there any other comments from any other commissioners before we, before we look for a motion?
No.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And is that the motion to recommend?
Yes, motion to recommend.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Giovanna, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, Chair Hall might be happy to. We will start with Commissioner Walnut. Hi. Commissioner Massey?
Hi.
Commissioner Hall?
Hi.
Chair Hall?
Day. Can I say that begrudgingly?
Thank you, the motion has passed three to one.
Okay. Thank you, Nicholas, for the report and for the hard work. Now we will turn to reports and announcements.
So I have just a couple. I don't know whether all of you got the email earlier this afternoon from Patrice all the city clerk about the fact that we have been sort of swinging back and forth between using the city provided email addresses for commissioner communication and then sometimes using personal email addresses. And so I would just reference her email that went out to all commissioners earlier today that we will only do official business with commissioners by using your City of San Mateo email address. So I just wanted to call that to your attention, because I, for one, am probably as guilty of this as anybody. You know, I, I put up somebody's name and all of a sudden, it's probably your own personal email address. So I think for all of the reasons that Patrice cited in her email, I just wanted you all to be aware that we will, that she is indicating that only official business will be communicated over your City of San Mateo email addresses. So just wanted to apprise you of that.
So, so Sheila, that would include the times when you email us to say, you know, there's a meeting this week, please confirm you're coming or something like that, right?
Correct.
That, that would, instead of going to our personal, that would go to the city email.
Correct.
Okay.
Sheila, well, is this going to affect what Giovanna does now where she'll email us and say, there's something in your city email, go look at it? Is that still going to be acceptable?
If we don't, if we're not getting a response over an issue, we might continue to do that. So, yes.
Okay, well, I, I would like to put a vote in for that to continue.
I, I agree.
And I, and I understand, I mean, I, I read the email carefully and, and this issue I know has come up before in, in the past. And I understand the reasons why, and I'm, I'm supportive of, of having the city email. But especially for our commission that only meets once a month, it's very hard for us to be in the habit of regular reading of the city email when most of the time we go on it and all we see is biz now. So Giovanna, you're, you're, I know you're there somewhere. Your, your email reminders are, are really helpful. And Sheila, I hope that the, the clerks direction, directive on this will allow for that practice to continue.
Yes, and in fact, I did speak with Patrice after her email went out. And I told her, look, I'm as guilty as anybody else on just using personal emails. And that, you know, I think her suggestion of trying to get commissioners into the habit of looking at your email once a day is great, but I would suggest that probably most of you won't, don't do that, because we don't have enough business that comes across.
Exactly.
So, and I, and the example that I used is, you know, today I sent out the, late in the day, and I apologize to Chair Hall, I just got busy. And so usually I send out a script in advance of sort of how we go through the, through the meeting. I don't think I got it out until, what, 2:00, 2:30 this afternoon?
Whatever, yeah.
And if he's already looked at his city email early in the morning, it's maybe possible that he would never know that that's in his email box. So either sending it to, and she understands that that, that type of communication, I think, is, is still permissible. But I think as, as Commissioner Massey knows from being on the planning commission, I think what they're really trying to do is make sure that any discussion over a business item is only being, is only going through the official city channels. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I think, I think if, if you could ask her, like, can you just send an email that says, please check your email, do not reply to this, or something? And, and that way, because I, I also recognize it's beneficial to keep our personal email out of the potential for public records request, request, but.
Oh, for sure.
But yeah, I think it is, even, even if it was, you know, like your example, Sheila, if you would send me an email that says, Eric, check your email, I would have gone and checked it right away. Seeing it came from you instead of Giovanna, for example, I'd know, oh, she was trying to tell me something. But, but yeah, I, I just think between the work emails and the personal emails and then the commissioners, like, there's a lot of email out there.
I know. I know. So thank you for indulging us in terms of that. Our spring brochure, which will again be online, will be coming out, I believe, the end of this week. Giovanna, is that correct? Or is it already out?
It's out, I got it today.
Yeah.
So we are once again trying to bridge that very gray period trying to continue with virtual programs and also trying to perhaps take advantage of opening up more outdoor programs and activities, especially for kids. So this is still a really gray time for us, because we're not getting a lot of direction from the state about what is or is not allowable. So we hope that by summer time, that we will have, and the planning for our summer program is currently underway right now. Our goal is to make our summer camps and, and activities and our swim lessons, we are going to be going back to providing swim lessons this summer for children in small groups. We are not going to be able to return a rec swim. We just don't feel that, given the control over numbers, that that's not something that we can do this summer. So we are planning and hope that by the end of March to have the summer guide published, or a summer guide online that will help have all of our summer day camp programs and aquatics programs. So we're, we're continuing to be hopeful that more activities will be able to open up through the summer, and I think really hopeful for the fall.
Sheila, if you have, if your staff hasn't already, my kids attend swimming lessons at La Patipaline, and they have gone through such an extensive process for figuring out some of the quirks of doing swim lessons during all of this time. And they have, have had a lot of success. So if it would be helpful, I would encourage you to reach out to them on the, the swim lessons.
Great, that's, that's really helpful, thanks. And I think those are all the announcements that we had. Other than managing arborist Matthew Freed is now a new dad.
Oh, wow.
Oh, good for him.
Yeah, he had a baby boy last Thursday. And so they're doing really well. He will be out on paternity leave pretty much full time until the middle of March, and then he plans on returning for about 20 hours a week through the end of March. So he is very, very excited. So next time you see him, congratulate him.
Now, there is a reason to use the email.
Jill, before, before we get off, before we get off this, what are you seeing for, as far as agenda items for April or May?
I'm, I'm not quite sure at this time. I think, you know, we will be bringing to the commission our draft proposed capital improvement program. We may want to bring that in April in case there are any changes that the commission wants to make. We will be bringing back for commission consideration some preliminary numbers of what a new skate park would cost in San Mateo and/or renovating either or both of the existing skate parks for you all to, to have consideration when you consider the capital improvement budget this year.
Great. On that note, I, I mean, I'm seeing, I'm starting to see, I think, a concerted effort to show up at every meeting regarding skate parks. So has that, the fact that it, it potentially will be on a future agenda been communicated out to the folks that are?
I did actually have a telephone conversation with Ryan Mozak after the last meeting, and I indicated that. But he also indicated that he will, he and, and his fellow skateboarders will continue to show a presence at Park and Recreation Commission meetings.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, the last two times you've said, okay, thank you for your comments, and moved on right away, and it just felt like there wasn't a dialogue happening. So it's good to hear that there is.
And those were all the announcements that staff has.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone. I think with that, we, well, was there anything from the crystal ball otherwise to say? Let's see anything else, okay. With that, I think we'll call the meeting to order or to, to, what's it on the back end? End the meeting? Whatever the right term is, adjourn, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you. Okay, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Have a good night.